First of all, my apologies on behalf of the board for making you all sit here for a few minutes. We appreciate your patience with that. We are live captioning our meetings. Please look at the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you'll find a link. Just click on that link to open a webpage with live captioning. Today, we have a few substitutions. Dr. Advice for Dr. Diaz, Ms. Patina Tellis for Dr. Worster, and Dr. Alice Marillo for President Apolito. So, welcome to our. I want substitutions isn't the right word for our designated, designated folks for today. At this time, I will call to order the special session in the American County Community College District Governing Board of June 10th, 2025. And for the record, I will call a roll call of both of the board members. Ms. Jackson Long is on her study abroad adventure. Ms. Butler.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Dr. Narini.
Present.
Ms. Smith is unable to join us. Ms. Sullivan.
Present.
Dr. Thor.
Present.
And myself. Our primary item for tonight is the special session regarding charter high school budgets. I would like to ask Mr. Stacy Boyd, Superintendent of both charter high schools, to present the budget under consideration for Gateway Early College High School. Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the S G E C Presidents, and guests. I'm actually up here today so that I can actually introduce the principals of the schools to actually present tonight the proposals for the budgets. So at this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Bruce Kelly, Gateway Early College High School Principal.
Well, hello. President Bitter Smith, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the Shared Governance Council, and college presidents and guests. Hello, I'm Bruce Kelly, and it is my distinct honor and privilege to serve as the principal of Gateway Early College High School. So this afternoon, appreciate the time to present a few of the highlights from this school year along with the 2026 proposed budget. So if we can advance the next slide. Help us dig right into it. I won't be reading all of the words and numbers on the slide. I just want to point out a couple of highlights on each of them. So for the highlights this year, there's one error that I'd like to correct publicly is, and it's good news. On the second item is, we actually had 31 students who earned one associate's degree this year. And then we had seven students who earned two degrees, so a total of 38 associates' degrees were awarded this year with the class of 68 students. And this is an all-time record for the high school. Let's go on to the next slide. So just a quick comparison, we are adding a few more students this year in our proposed enrollment. We're going to be up about 15 more students than the previous year. All the arrows are in the right direction, at least from my perspective. They like aperos. And that's exciting. Also, that particular enrollment number will be setting a new record for the total enrollment for Gateway Early College High School since its inception. Next slide. So this is a little more detail on here. I'm just going to work from the bottom up. Last year's budget was about 3.7 million. The new budget's 3.8 million. It's about a 4.2% increase over time. Really, the one kind of down arrow is the Prop 123 money. It's about 25,000 this year, and that will go to zero for the next fiscal year. So otherwise, all the other categories, we think there is one exception for title programs. We'll see a little bit of loss in Title II, which covers our professional development monies. But it's not particularly significant as far as the operations of the school go. Next slide. So just the highlights, some of this already mentioned. Boost in enrollment. No additional teaching staff required. We are going to make some adjustments to our master schedule. Eliminate some of the study halls and then fold in either some core elective or dual enrollment classes. So we can serve all of the students without incurring any staffing FTE for our budget. So that will help us hopefully stay budget positive for this year. We were at the end of 2025, we're a positive budget in almost categories. So just want to thank you again for the opportunity, provide a brief overview of the great things happening at Gateway Early College High School. That's all I have for today.
Before we let you sit down, are there any questions from the board regarding the budget? Let me offer our group thanks for the new attire.
That will, I think you should go to Stacy.
Well, we've got, do we have one for each? I think we have.
It's a Gecko green shirts also serve as safety vests as a secondary purpose.
One for each institution, so. And I would, I don't want to preempt Dr. Narini, but I do, I think you are aware that Dr. Narini has made a suggestion in which the board concurs in, is that going forward, as we end up with having presentations from both our students from our colleges, that we will add some student presentations within an agenda and appropriate time from our two high schools that works.
And thank you for that.
And we, and we thank, we look forward to those, and thank you for the cooperation getting those set, at least from your institution from Gateway. All right, seeing no questions, do I have a motion to approve the proposed budget for Gateway Early College High School? Well, a year, 2025, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
Your motion in a second? All those, if everything was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Definitely feel that we allowed him to get off a little too easy. I do need to apologize in addressing you. I should have said, Dr. President Bitter Smith, so I do apologize.
No worries, we, we entered.
Yeah, we look alike.
So I do apologize. At this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Lisa Thomas, the principal of Phoenix College Preparatory Academy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Welcome, Ms. Thomas.
Good afternoon, President Smith, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the S G E C, and guests. My name is Lisa Thomas. I've been principal of PCPA for a little over a year now, and I just want to share some highlights of this past year with you. Like my colleague, Mr. Kelly, I'll just mention a few things. We had 58 graduates this year, and 26 of them graduated with an AA or AS degree. As you can see, we had quite a bit of money for membership, millions in scholarships and grants, highlighting one student that received by himself 1.8 million scholarships. We also ranked number four in the state for small school FAFSA completion. That 96.3% may increase. Oftentimes, we do have a couple of seniors who have graduated already come back in and ask for help with the FAFSA, so I'm looking forward to that number actually growing a little bit. Next slide. Here you can see our comparison of our budget. School year 2025 compared to 2026. Our enrollment number, we would like to keep it at 255, which means by August, I'll hope to have a few more students than that, so that we can maintain that as our goal throughout the fall into January till our 100th day. You can see our state funding per student is increasing as well as our Prop 301. Next slide. As you can see there again, looking at 2025 versus 2026, our state funding, state-based funding is increasing a little bit. As with Gateway, our estimated Prop 123 is decreasing. Our Prop 301 will increase. Instructional improvement will stay the same. And we just have a little decrease with our federal title and our S R, our total revenue, total budget revenue increasing just a bit. Slide please. We were able to maintain approximately 258 students this year. We are going to have, again, projected at 255. Anything over and above that is golden. 20 special education students, 18 English language learners. Our ELL students did very well this year, many of them becoming proficient. We will be hiring five new teachers this year. And our budget includes 163 for college tuition and 20,000 for college books, which is an increase of 5,000 from the past year, the year that we're just finishing. That's all I have. Thank you for letting me give a quick overview of what we have lined up for next year.
Great. Any questions from the board for Ms. Kelly? Ms. Sullivan?
Usually, there's supposed to be questions in the budget. I don't have those, which is why I didn't ask our principal at Gateway, but I had the pleasure of attending your high school graduation. And it was really impressive to see the talent of so many students. That was actually the first high school graduation I've attended in all the years that I've been here. So it was nice, and I hope to go to Gateway as well next year. I was impressed with the faculty and their enthusiasm to support students, but the talent that was exhibited by those students who were able to walk across the stage and the numbers that had ropes and and stalls and everything was really impressive. So thank you for what you're doing. And an anecdote, I take my clothes to a dry cleaner on occasion. And she has had a daughter who was graduated from the Phoenix College Academy and went on to Phoenix College and is now on a BA track. So she's very invested, but her start was at your school. And her sister is now there. And every time I take an article of clothing, the mother has a lot to tell me about her impression of the school, and she's very happy to have her daughters attend there. And I tend to get a near full of that all the time. So I appreciate knowing that. And thank you, Superintendent Boyd, for your leadership to this, both high schools as well.
Thank you. Any further questions? Or comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Davis. I'll sit back.
I also got to attend your graduation, which, like Ms. Sullivan said, was very impressive. The other thing is, I'm on the FAFSA Coalition, the statewide FAFSA Coalition. And every time I saw your numbers, I was sitting in my office all by myself going, woo-hoo! So, good job.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, do I have a motion to approve the proposed budget for Phoenix College Preparatory Academy for FY 2025, 26? So moved. Moved by Ms. Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Any additional discussions? If not, all of everybody was saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. And I think board members, you are seeing documents coming down the way for you to sign. If you don't have them signed, then please do that. As you know, this is the board's first hearing on this process, the adoption of our budgets. And after a public comment will take place at the June 24th, 2025 regular meeting. And with that, this ends our special session for tonight. And we will now adjourn into our agenda review meeting. So let the record reflect that it is by 20, actually, 5:18 by the district clocks, adjourning this particular meeting. Don't go away. We'll come into the next one. We are ready. We are live captioning our meetings. I'm continuing to do so. Please look at the chat window of the WebEx meeting where you'll find a link. Just click on that link to open a webpage with live captioning. Let the record reflect that it is now by 20. And I'm calling to order the agenda review meeting of the American County Community College District Governing Board of June 10th, 2025. We will be reviewing the agenda for the June 24th, 2025 board meeting. Normally, this meeting is all virtual, and I read through these things very fast. So if you have questions or comments, et cetera, wave, let me know, so we can move to that as well. So we will start beginning that meeting with an executive session for the board. And from that, we will move into our meeting starting at 6:30, which is the public hearing, truth and taxation hearing that we were required to do. And also had the early college, high school budgets for Gateway and for Phoenix College. And from there, we'll move into our regular agenda. We'll have the call to order, budget allegiance, substitutions, and some exceptional reports, including the faculty executive council, the adjunct faculty association report, and a staff representation update. And then we will have the chancellor's report. Then on to our consent agenda items. And again, if there's any questions about any of these, just stop and we'll get those answers for you in agenda review. The first of those items, two and three, one will be the adoption of the Phoenix College Prep Academy budget, and then the adoption of the Gateway Early College High School budget. Item number four is a placeholder, and that's the approval of amendment to the adopted budget expenditures for FY 2023, 24 to reflect actual expenditures by fund. And we'll have some follow-up detail for that prior to our meeting on the 24th. Item number five is an approval of the acceptance of a new grant from the Arizona Department of Education for the Carl D. Perkins V Basic Grant for Fiscal Year 2025, 2026 in the amount of $1,800,000. Press numbers.
Bitter Smith?
Yes, Ms. Bitter Thor.
I have a question on this item as well as F7, F8, and F10, and it's all the same questions. Given Donald Trump's skinny budget and the daily announcements of eliminations of programs and grants and so on, are we concerned that this grant is in jeopardy, or if any of these grants are in jeopardy?
So Chancellor Gonzalez, I think those are, it's a bulk question, reference to all those items. Is there someone who that can?
President Bitter Smith and Dr. Thor, we are monitoring those. We're not getting any specific word on any of them. We know, you know, there's certainly concerns over the implications to financial aid for our students and pay attention to that. But we haven't seen anything specific on some of the grants that we currently have and that we intend to apply for and continue to accept. So until then, we'll continue to accept and work under the guidelines that we accept them for and and hope for the best moving forward and plan otherwise. Well, we certainly keep you all posted though.
Dr. Thor, actually, just as a follow-up to that question, because I think there are a couple of the board members that asked about these in the same, the same vein. Is there, are there implications here if we accept the grant and then midstream they are pulled? Are there obligations the district will still have to live with as a result of accepting those grants?
I would have to look at the specific grants, and I'd probably lean towards the, some of my leadership team over here that maybe oversees some of these grants to answer those specific questions. But oftentimes with federal grants, we are making some commitments of being able to retain, for example, 25% of the workforce that we hire through a grant. But again, those, those are, they'll differ from grant to grant. So if any of my team members can speak to some of those specifically, Eddie, Dr. Jena.
Or they could come subsequent to it before our meeting. It doesn't have to be.
President Bitter Smith, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez. I can speak a little bit to some of it. That's, that's, that's what I know. I've been, I've been assured by people who know that Perkins funding has been set level for fiscal year 26. That's what we've been told. In addition, the Apex funding has been set level. That's item number eight. The rest of that, it's unknown. So if that helps at all, I could also add, and a little more broadly than what Dr. Thor asked, the Small Business Administration has indicated, while they are tightening ship, that they don't believe that we're going to be impacted in terms of the size of our grants, but that was not an assurance. Sorry?
I'm surprised that that was different.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So this may be a question to President Smith, but at one point, adult basic education was scheduled for total elimination. Has that changed?
I do not know the answer to that.
Go ahead and come up.
Not just that.
I can share a little bit of a little bit. Did you get that right? Thank you, President Bitter Smith. So where, where we are with tracking the adult ed funding is that although the skinny budget is put out as a marker to take away all that funding, it actually all happens through the appropriations committee, through the appropriations that happen at the federal level. So where we are right now is that there is advocacy across the country to support adult education for our contacts. What we're hearing is, and most recently from the state, that what they think might end up not getting approved would have impacted our program around, and I'm sorry, sir, this was all recent today, actually, in a meeting, or yesterday in a meeting, that around a little over 500,000 out of that budget. So that's kind of where we're sitting right now. That program, as you might be familiar with, has a long history of doing a lot of braided funding and finding funding from multiple sources, most recently with Strata Education. So that team is well aware and is looking at other funding options as we move forward. So we're hopeful, but we're also very well aware of what might or might not happen.
Thank you. Further questions? If, oh, Ms. Davis.
Do we have a president in the room who has lost funding? Because there have been grants that have been taken away.
I've seen at least one hand raised.
Could we ask how that was dealt with? What happened?
Come on up to the podium. Yes, please.
Thank you. First, we cried. Phoenix College, I think, took the first hit in the system with some NSF grants. And the second was a grant that we were in partnership with ASU, the All-Rise Alliance. Both involved reallocation of some personnel to other lines that we were seeking to fill at the college where we could align talent. And then the second was to cease spending. So we had to close out those grants quickly, and we had a short window to do that. But we were not allowed to spend any further in the grant. And so when you receive notice that the grant is closed, you're not obligated to pay back anything. Or we were not asked to pay back anything. We were just not allowed to spend going forward. But in, we made a good faith effort, particularly where we had strong talent, to retain that talent at Phoenix College. These were good employees, and we were fortunate that that talent belonged. So that kind of gives you an indication of what a college has to do. And I would imagine that some of that would depend on where you are in the grant in terms of the life cycle near the beginning or at the end.
Yes, good question. Ms. Sullivan?
Dr. Britt, what was the impact to students as a result of those grants being?
For NSF, I would argue that it, for both, these were STEM-focused grants. And so both will have a significant impact on supporting transition of students into research fields, specifically biology, nursing, and that sort of thing. So the impact will be heavy there. I would say very impactful and detrimental.
Actually, enrollment numbers.
It definitely could impact enrollment. It will, student success will take a big hit. Both of these programs lend a great deal of support to students, particularly first-gen students. And so the majority of our students at Phoenix College are both first-gen and come from significant low socioeconomic backgrounds. And our goal was to draw them into programs that would lead to high sustaining wages. But these demographics are also highly underrepresented in STEM fields. And both were nurturing success in those fields. And so what we will probably see is fewer students transitioning into STEM-based careers as a result. That would be my, that would be my predictive.
Thank you, Dr. Britt. Any further questions? If not, I will, can read through the rest of the agenda items, which are similar but different in terms of the grants. So item number six is approval of acceptance of a new grant award in the amount of $297,538 to Glendale Community College from NASA for an undergraduate research initiative, ACCENT Extreme of Falls, the Desiccation Temperature and Radiation, a bio-signature for survivability project for the period from September 1, 2025 through August 2027. Number seven, approval of the acceptance of a continuation grant in the amount of $7,406,000 from Arizona Department of Education, Adult Education and US Department of Education to Rio Salada College for FY 2026, Adult Education from July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026. Item number eight, approval of acceptance of a new cooperative agreement award from the Department of Defense to the American County Community College District for the Apex Accelerator Program in the amount of $499,617.86 for the period of from 5/15/2025 through 3/31/2026. Item number nine, approval of acceptance of an increase to the intergovernmental agreement between American County Human Services and American County Community College District to utilize the American Rescue Plan Act funds, contract number C-2223-041 in the amount of $5,5896 to end December 31, 2025. Item number 10 is a placeholder, because there's some further information coming. It's approval of the acceptance of a new grant in the amount of $751,201 from the Arizona Office of Economic Opportunity. It's a sub-award from the US Department of Labor to the American County Community College District for Arizona Quest from the date, which is what we're waiting, 2/9/125. President Bitter Smith? Dr. Thor?
What college or colleges are involved with this?
Item number 10, Dr. Gonzalez.
Sure. President Bitter Smith, Dr. Thor, let me refer this question to either Dr. Armour or Dr. Warner, who are the district and responsible agents.
Dr. Armour?
Ms. Bitter Smith, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the S G E C. This is an economic opportunity grant. It doesn't target a particular college. Rather, it targets a collection of programs, and they are around medical device manufacturing, digital badging and credentialing, and some curriculum development. I think Gateway is the home. Is Dr. Diaz with us this evening?
Yes.
So I will get you some additional information.
Yeah, the reason that I'm asking is this grant involves curriculum development.
Yes.
And so logically, there's faculty involved who have a home at some college. And it also just seems appropriate to me that the responsible agents should also include the appropriate college leadership.
We will research and add that. Dr. Thor, thank you very much for the question.
Thank you, Dr. Armour and Dr. Thor. Item number 11, approval for issues to issue a purchase order to Wesco Engineering Solutions Distribution in the amount of $246,336 for LED lighting replacement in the Hanley Center Building at Phoenix College. Item number 12, approval to issue a purchase order to ASC Process Systems in the amount of $281,810 for the purchase of an aerospace EconoClave for the Blueford Hall Aerospace Project at the Chandler Gilbert Community College Williams Campus. I have no idea what an EconoClave is, but I'm presuming somebody could answer that. I don't need it now, but I just maybe hope for the board to know exactly what that is. Yes, exactly. Item number 13, approval to issue a purchase order to JBS Roofing in the amount of $747,383 for the gymnasium building roof replacement project at Phoenix College. That I know what it is, the building roof replacement is. Item number 14, approval to issue a purchase order to Energy Design Systems, Inc. in the amount of $48,125 for engineering consulting services for district-wide assessment and analysis of all performing arts and auditorium facilities. Item number 15, approval to issue a purchase order to Calianti Construction, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $1,100,100. Item number fifteen, approval to issue a purchase order to Calianti Construction, Inc. in the amount not to exceed of one million, one hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars for phase two construction for the career health building nursing remodel at Gateway Community College. Item number sixteen, to issue, is approval to issue a purchase order to Fullman Construction, Inc. in an amount not to exceed three hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred and thirty four dollars and fifty eight cents to repair a sinkhole at Gateway Community College. Item number seventeen, approval of a partial guaranteed maximum price contract amendment number three, the district wide central plant upgrades, repair, multi-phase project phases three and four in the amount not to exceed seven million, three thousand, eight hundred and sixty seven dollars and sixty cents to Pueblo Mechanical and Controls LLC. And number eighteen, approval of partial guaranteed maximum price contract amendment number seven, the district central plant upgrades and repair of the multi-phase project phases one and two in the amount not to exceed four million, seven hundred thousand, six hundred and twenty four dollars and thirty cents to Pueblo Mechanical and Controls, Inc. Item number nineteen, approval of contract renewal with Market Ingenuity, Inc. for underwriting services for KJAS and KPOC from July one, twenty twenty five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. Ms. Davis, did you get an answer to your question on that you were asking me about? Tell me, which I think actually needs some expansion, because it's, it's, this has been on our agendas before, but I think it's, it is, it is an ongoing. Kate, is that correct? Please, yeah. And I apologize, she, Ms. Davis asked me the question earlier, and I, I know we've had this as an ongoing regular agenda item, but.
Well, I'm hoping I can tell you a little bit more than a little, but yeah, in this time. Thank you so much, President Bitter Smith, Board Member Davis. Market Ingenuity is a long time, a company that we've had a sole source partnership with over multiple years. What they do is they help, they help the radio stations with the fundraising they do that supports the radio stations. So basically, it is a renewal of the work that we'll be doing with them. And especially, you know, as we're kind of waiting to see what happens with some of the federal dollars, having them on board to help us is, is paramount to the success of the stations.
Great, thank you. I'm going to tell you, what I told her was not incorrect, but yours is much more thorough. So thank you for that. Good. Item number twenty, approval of a three year renewal of a service level agreement with Pack Back, Inc. effective August one, twenty twenty five through July thirty one, twenty twenty eight in a total not to exceed three hundred ninety seven thousand, five hundred and sixty five dollars. Twenty one, approval lease agreement between the American County Community College District for Chandler Gilbert Community College and the Tempe Chinese School from July one, twenty twenty five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight.
President Bitter Smith?
Doctor Thor?
It's me again. This particular item is leasing twenty nine thousand, one hundred and thirty six square feet. And my count is that that's thirty two classrooms and or offices. I can't tell whether they're offices. For a total income of six thousand, ninety six dollars for the year. Is, has there been an analysis that this is the best and highest use of that space?
Dr. Gonzalez?
President Bitter Smith, Dr. Thor, Bettina, would you be able to provide any insight into that?
Uh, Dr. Thor, President Bitter Smith, members of the board, I'm Rusty. Thank you for your question. So the, the Chinese school utilizes space on the weekends primarily on our campus. So they utilize, it's one of our rental incomes that we utilize, and they've been a longtime partner of Chandler Gilbert, and they continue to grow and expand. They've got a very large amount of, of participation in their program. They're there almost every weekend.
Thank you, that's very helpful. The action item perhaps would be improved if it indicated that this was used on the weekends.
Absolutely, we'll take that back.
Thank you.
Revisit item accordingly.
Thank you, Bettina, thank you, Dr. Thor.
Appreciate that.
Okay, item number twenty two is another placeholder, and that will be further forthcoming. We'll deal with the curriculum and cadillac management software for all ten of our colleges. Item number twenty three is approval lease agreement between Gateway Community College Center for Entrepreneurial Innovation and the Arizona Border Regents for the Phoenix biomedical campus. Any questions on that one? Now, item number twenty four, approval of the designation of Kimberly Grineo, Vice Chancellor, Business Services CFO to certify expenditure limits reports for FY twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. No one can say no, right? Item number twenty five, approval for a new utility easement for the city of Mesa to relocate and replace the existing water meter and sublateral water lines at Mesa Community College on the Red Mountain Campus. Item number twenty six, approval of the international intergovernmental agreement between the American Community College District and Nattaburg Unified School District, a public school district for the provision of dual enrollment programs through June thirty, twenty twenty six. And item number twenty seven, approval of curriculum item courses modifications twenty eight, new twenty two, and deletions one sixty three, occupational programs, modifications five, deletions two, academic programs, modifications fifty one, and deletions one. Board members, we've been asking questions along the way, but are there any other comments and questions on the consented, proposed consent agenda items? If not, let's move to the non consent action items. Approval to suspend elimination of the new residential faculty staffing model described in Article fourteen point one one and fourteen point one two of the residential faculty agreement for academic year twenty five, twenty six. Any questions from the board? And then two under the non consent agenda items will be the chancellor's employment agreement, which we are in process of working on. Any questions on either one of those? If not, under first read and information, we'll have the employee separations report from April nineteenth through May sixteen, twenty twenty five, which we don't have yet. Questions? Then monitoring reports, there will be the placeholder, which is will be forthcoming, will be the budget analysis report and Fund One. And then we will move on to the community linkage reports. And we'll again announce, we'll have upcoming, next meeting and dates and times, locations. Obviously, the meeting we just talked about will be June twenty fourth. We have an executive session, and then a public hearing and regular board meeting at six thirty here in the Rio Conference Room on August, then July. We won't know what to do with our Tuesday evenings, but on August twelfth, twenty twenty five, we'll be in a gender review meeting at four thirty via WebEx with the regular board meetings on August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, again, here in the Rio Conference Center. So that is the draft agenda so far for our upcoming board meeting at the end of June. We have concluded our agenda review meeting, and will now move forward to the first read and information items for board members. Item number E is the first read of staff policy manual revisions, deletions for the charter high school employment policy alignment and the CEU stipend policy revisions. Board members, are there any questions?
Is anyone presenting on that? I don't have any questions, I was just.
I do not have anybody slotted to do that. Dr. Gonzalez, is there someone that?
I didn't hear a question, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the question was, Ms. Sullivan was asking if anybody here to speak to that, if need be. I don't think she had questions, but, but I am singly approached, so.
Good evening, President Bitter Smith, members of the board. So we actually have here William Berry from our HR team. He actually is the drafter of these policies, and he does have, just I've asked him to prepare an overview in case there are questions. He doesn't have a formal presentation, but he can either come up and summarize them, or he can be available for questions, whatever.
Board members, I, I think there's probably value in having him give us a summary, so.
Hello. So what I'm going to go over first with the board is the CEU policy changes. So there was the, we had an audit, and they had decided to delete the CEU language from the staff appendix. So it's being removed to address the audit findings to ensure fiscal accountability and eliminate consistencies in professional development funds. The internal audit on professional growth found that CEU stipend funds were not available to all employee groups, resulting in inconsistent treatment and limited access. So there was a task force with representation from professional growth stakeholders. And the previously used CEU stipends will now support mandatory training and related supplies. So in a nutshell, the funds aren't going away, they're just being opened up for more use and more oversight.
And again, this is a result of an audit recommendation, correct? Questions? Great, thank you for being here to draw attention, we appreciate that.
And then for the charter high school policy, there is a little bit more on that one. But to put that into a nutshell, obviously, with K twelve, that's governed by Arizona revised statutes, Title fifteen. And there are specifics with the Arizona State Charter Board of policy or items that have to be in policy. So what we did here, we did have a staff, we had a, excuse me, charter high school committee. And so we went through to ensure things like I V P fingerprint card clearance, obviously, making sure that we have the right teacher certifications and qualifications, compliance certification, and just making sure that it meets the minimum standards that we need in Title fifteen. Again, making sure that with teacher or certificated individuals, which always sounds like I'm not saying something correctly. So making sure that certificated individuals are on their contract and that that renewal process would happen in April to match K twelve, the difference between a twelve month and a ten and a half month contract. Other than there, most of the things will line up with the rest of our employees. The only other only other major again, is just really making sure that with strict standards and rigid requirements that we are making sure that our students that are under the age of, obviously, eighteen, that we're following all of those, including specific compliance trainings for charter high school staff, so.
Now, I will ask any questions? Not, thank you very much. All right, that completes our agenda review for this evening. And before I ask to, for a motion to adjourn to executive session for the board, because we're going back to complete some other business. Dr. Gonzalez, anything else you need to add while you have everybody assembled?
I'm sorry, could you?
Anything else you need to add while you have everybody assembled?
No, thank you for being here this evening.
Then board members, do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to ARIS thirty eight dash forty thirty four, thirty one, oh, three, subsection eight point one, eight point three, and eight point four? So move. By Dr. Thor, seconded.
Second.
By Ms. Sullivan, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? By unanimous vote, the agenda review of the meeting is now adjourned, and we are now, will be reconvening an executive session upstairs. We have a few minutes to make that move upstairs, but please don't waste time, I appreciate that. The record reflect that we have adjourned agenda review at five fifty. With that, thank you very much.